Moving on there, from there moving on to superintendent's report.
Well, thank you, Mr. Rola, for the superintendent's report. I have the federal programs director coming up here, and I think we'll Jesse be with you, and you have a short presentation for us.
Good evening, President Rola, distinguished members of the board, and Dr. Abrego. My name is Sheila Burke, and I'm the Director of Federal Programs, and next to me is Jesse Martinez, the Manager of Community Engagement. We're here tonight to present to you our end-of-year annual report on community engagement and our summer programs. At this time, I'm going to turn it over to Jesse Martinez, who's going to walk us through our end-of-year report for community engagement, and then I'll come back in to share out our report on summer programs.
Good evening, Superintendent Abrego, and distinguished members of the board. I wanted to quickly highlight the Office of Family and Community Engagement, their annual report and its findings. May I approach the diocese so I can provide you with a copy? So this is just over, an overview and just a highlight of kind of the year's activities from 2016 to 17 for the Office of Family and Community Engagement. I'm not going to go in-depth with it. This is kind of for your pleasure of reading, but I'll just go over briefly the sections. Are we able to click through that? Okay. So just, there's four engagement focus areas that we focused on: district engagement, academic partnership, family empowerment, and staff development. The 2016-17 annual report will provide you with a portfolio of work based on these four themes, along with a timeline of activities as shown on pages four and five. So you could see all the work that we did in pages four and five, just that timeline, so you could see. We included also QR codes, so if you wanted to scan that, read, or watch some of the videos on there, you could as well. Next slide. For the district engagement, we focused on four areas. I have highlighted the four activities that we've done to engage families and community members across the district. This is the Superintendent Parent Forum, the annual PTO meeting, the DAC Subcommittee, and the Parent Satisfaction Survey. So that is for district engagement. Academic partnership, we looked at family literacy nights, family workshops, home visits, and the STOMP Parent-to-Parent Professional Program. You could see a lot of the data in the report based on these four initiatives there. Family empowerment, we focused on Families Empowered Institute and the Resource Fair and the Parent University. These activities were really looking at parents to be empowered to be active partners in their child's success. Lastly, we hosted, like I said, two large-scale events to engage families and community members, which included the Families Empowered Institute and Parent University. Lastly, we focused on staff development. So we had family liaison training and principal induction, where we focused on providing staff development around family and community engagement through ongoing family liaison training, and even a workshop for principals on family and community engagement. Lastly, here, the family impact. So the Office of Family and Community Engagement hosted over 20 district and school-based activities during the 2016-17 school year. Just as far as parent participation, there are approximately 645 parents, including members, that were part of a family engagement tracker that we tracked. Out of those 645, 417 parents or family members have participated in one or three district or school-based family engagement activities. 25 parents or family members have participated in four to seven district or school-based family engagement activities, and 13 parents or family members have participated in eight or more district or school-based family engagement activities. Out of these parents, there were 51 parents or family members that listed themselves as being involved in the parent leadership groups at their school. 36 parents or family members listed as members of their school's PTA or PTO, and 15 parents or family members listed themselves as members of the BAC or the DAC. As reflected in the findings, 38 individuals were involved in four or more activities, which indicate their level of engagement. The Office of Family and Community Engagement wants to build upon their engagement by evolving their leadership ability in order to serve in various district and school-based capacities, from PTOs, BACs, and to the DAC. It is our goal that we build parent leaders who are invested and committed to the long-term success of Adams City. And that's my presentation. Oh, just lastly, we do want to invite tomorrow is the DAC informational meeting. It is from 5:30 to 7:00 tomorrow. It's going to be in this room. And we have the Superintendent Parent Forum, which is on Thursday, September 28th, and it's going to be two sessions, a morning session and an evening session.
What time?
The morning session is from 9:30 to 11:30 a.m., and the evening session is from 6:15 to 8:15, and that is going to be our Lady Mother of the Church. And we have some flowers up here if you like. We invite all families and communities to attend these two events.
I'm going to quickly share out our summer school end-of-year report. This summer, we offered two different programs. One, a summer of learning. The dates are listed there. It was funded by Title I and 21st Century, and we serviced grades kinder through 12th grade. The other program we offered was Jump Start. The dates are also listed on the slide, and I've included it in your folder. The programs that we offered there were just a literacy program for students who were on an active read plan. The funding source was Read Act, and we served grades kinder through 3rd grade per the funding source. The summer of learning program cost an estimated $349,525, and our Read Act, I'm sorry, Jump Start program cost $57,208. Included in your folder, I have listed out their attendance for both programs. The first one you're going to see is for our summer of learning, which service grades kinder through 12th grade. We have the student count for a total of 1,479 students across the district that we served, and then our percent in attendance. Our district percentage was at 94.92%. Our attendance for Jump Start is listed there, and again with our presents and our student count. Next, I'm going to show our academic results for our programs, and provide an overview, ending with videos from our both programs for elementary and middle school and high school. During our elementary program, we offered an extended school year for students who qualified, a bilingual program, gifted and talented, a reteaching program for students who performed in the bottom 25% of their class, and an enrichment program for those who performed in the top 20% of their class. For middle school, we offered extended school year, gifted and talented, reteach and enrichment, and we also offered an Algebra I course for high school credit for incoming 9th grade As an academic result, we had 87% of our students participating in our summer of learning program, increased their academic growth between the dates of June 4th and June 22nd, as measured by our formative assessments that each child took either throughout the course of their time or through a pre-imposed assessment. Our high school students were offered an extended school year, gifted and talented, credit recovery both online and face-to-face, a reteach and enrichment, and we offered Algebra I course for high school credit for incoming 9th grade students. Here's our academic results for our credits. Adams City High School served 236 students, and out of those, they earned 170 credits as they earned .5 in the summer. At Lester Arnold, we served 72 students for a total of 22.5 credits earned. And then KMS offered an algebra class for their incoming 9th grade students. There were 16 students total that participated for seven credits earned, again at .5 each. In your folders, I provided all the survey results that we did. We surveyed all of our students, our staff, our families, to get results on how we performed and how our program went. So inside of your folders, you will see all of that. I'm not going to go through it. It does look like this in there, and I've listed the questions, as well as the count that we had for each of the results of the questions that we asked. The results of our surveys, we surveyed over 190 families that returned or responded to our survey. 102 were very satisfied with our program. 15 were mostly satisfied, and 64 were satisfied with the programs that we offered during the summer, for a satisfaction rating of 94%. And again, all of the feedback is listed in there for you to read through at your leisure. I would like to end with the two video clips from our students and staff for our elementary programs, as well as our science enrichment program from our middle school students who attended the Metro State University.
The Summer of Learning program was designed to accommodate students from all backgrounds in order to help them with academic success. Students were selected with a targeted approach, which means that we identified the students who would benefit most from summer school. In elementary schools, project-based learning allowed students to bring their interests and passions into the classroom. For example, the state standard of informational text was made engaging by letting students make choices about their topics of learning within a theme or project.
They did a research project on habitats. So first, they chose their habitat, and then they researched using books and the internet in order to find details in the text that they could write about.
The key word here is choice. Students chose oceans, deserts, or rainforests, then researched, created graphic organizers, and built dioramas while working with fellow teammates.
My students did a lot of writing this summer, and I think their writing really improved. So their ability to create a paragraph that includes an introduction, three details, and a conclusion. Summer school is a really cool opportunity for our students, especially the ones who need extra support in the classroom. Can you practice reading it?
Yeah, you can do it. Be confident. And conclusion.
The student is sharing his writing, but not in his native language. With extra language supports, our students are able to demonstrate their mastery of content in two languages, which may lead them someday to a seal of biliteracy.
Conclusion. There are oceans all over the world.
We were able to do small group reading, small group math, and it really helps support the skills that they learn during the school year.
In another classroom, students participated in the inquiry-based learning method, where students are posed with a question, and the teacher acts as a guide as students pursue their own discovery. Students researched, designed, and built their own board games using 21st century learning skills such as working in teams, using the scientific process, and organizing their work using a research binder.
The research binder includes items such as the research page, topics and wonderings, a bibliography, planning and designing phases, a spot for the kids to actually draw out their game board, and start off by exploring a topic in a game. What are they wondering about? Then the students ask questions. How does this topic relate to real-world scenarios? How does this interest me? What kinds of things are we going to learn with this topic? So this ties into class learning and interest because the kids are working in groups, so they're doing joint productive activities. Some of the students designed the games on their own, and then they got feedback from their partners during the design and testing phase, and were able to incorporate that feedback into their own games.
Hi, my name is Iggy. I'm in third grade. My topic is...
Each student demonstrated and presented their game to their peers. In doing so, they demonstrated their academic language, developed their vocabulary, and got to practice their public speaking skills.
Hi, my name is Donna, and I made this game. It's called Spiders in the Kitchen. My topic is spiders in the kitchen. So the cards were, there's a spider at the front, and at the back, it tells you move three walls, or two, or one, but there's only one card that tells you to move four walls. Spider's in the middle, and if I got three walls, I can move that one, the spider's there, and then I can move this one, then you can go there, and if I move that one, he goes over here, and he gets in there, now I get a point. So the process that I did, I explained, asked, imagined, planned, created, and improved, and I shared.
Come fall, it'll help them with their reading, math, and writing performance because they've been writing their own rules. So they've been given a different kind of structure with their writing on how to write rules. So what are the step-by-step instructions? With math, a lot of their games incorporate movement or dice rolling, so you're doing that basic addition, subtraction in your games. And with the reading, they're learning how to read the rules of different games. So that'll help with their language skills as well.
Because of summer school, I think my students are going to go into school this fall with a leg up. They've had extra reading and writing experience that some of the other students might not have had, and I think they're going to be able to remember what they did this summer and transfer it to their classroom this coming fall.
So the middle school video you're about to see is our students from Adams City Middle School and Curtin Middle School. We took 30 students from each campus down to Metro State. They were able to work with the college students there to get a feel for the campus. They worked with the professors there through lab, science labs. They were able to do different topics each week. So one was around chemical combustions, one was around ecosystems, and so you're going to see some of the work that the students are doing through their science courses with the Metro State team.
We went down to Cherry Creek and picked up some samples of the water. And we got those samples and looked at them through a microscope. And in the picture, I'm fascinated by the discovery I found, because we found a little small creature which looked like a larvae of a dragonfly. But once you looked under it through the microscope, you could see all the details in its eyes, body, legs, you could see the whole thing. It tells me that there's a lot of things out there that you still need to discover, and the world is full of more creatures like that, that I am willing to take that leap and try to make new discoveries.
We had like fluorescent lights, and we had like fluorescent powder on our hands, and my nails were glowing. This relates to forensic science because law enforcement uses it to look at crimes. I learned that I can be a microbiologist.
In the picture that you see, what we're doing is we're working on bacteria, and we created art out of it. And I decided to draw the deathly hollows using bacteria. The way scientists use this is when they're trying to study bacteria, and if it can be useful or harmful to the, or doesn't do anything at all to the human body, they occasionally use UV lights just to see it, or they use microscopes. What I learned was that science just doesn't focus on one topic. There are so many topics that you can choose from.
I learned that in science, it's not all hard, difficult, and frustrating for you to do. It can be fun if you really put your mind to it.
The stuff we learned here at Metro State University Denver is going to contribute to my future because I want to be an aerospace engineer, and I learned different sciences and math that could help me become that. And I also learned electrical engineering here while I was in my visit, and I was having so much fun in how I could use that in what I want to profess it.
Thank you very much. Very enlightening. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, that was it.
Moving on to routine items. I need a motion for the approval of superintendent's recommendation on personal action. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to business. First one will be grants. Superintendent's recommendation, I need a motion for the approval to accept funds for pathway implementing early action grant from the Colorado Department of Education. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 2.0, board action. 2.1, Board's Recommendation. Ratification of Amendment Withdrawal and Settlement Agreement with the Rocky Mountain Insurance Risk Group, RMRIG, formerly known as the Adams County Board of Cooperative Educational Services, VOICs. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to other, 3.0, 3.1, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval of Vin State Overnight Trip to Vail, Colorado, 2017 Superintendent's Conference. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica, please. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Superintendent's Recommendation, 3.2, I need a motion for the approval to purchase equipment to replace streamers at Hanson Elementary and Alsup Elementary. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes. It's coming out the Capital Reserve Fund. Is that coming out of the nutrition account? Out through the Capital Reserve Fund?
It is not coming out of nutrition fund. It's coming out of Capital Reserve, the district capital.
Right, but you do have a $72,000 in the Capital Reserve stated for nutrition.
Right. Allocated to the Nutrition Services Fund.
Right, so is that $40,000 coming out, your nutrition fund that's in the Capital Reserve?
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other question?
Any others? Okay, crab role call, Monica, please. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.313, or 3.13, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to purchase ReadWell from Voyager, Sporty S Learning Incorporated. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.4, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to contract with Frontline Educational Enrichment to provide a platform for the required educational plan. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.5, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval for out-of-state travel to Charlotte, North Carolina for the National Gifted and Talented Conference. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.6, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval for in-state overnight travel to Breckenridge, Colorado for the state gifted and talented directors meeting. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.7, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval for in-state overnight travel to Vail, Colorado for the Reading in the Rockies Conference. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.8, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval for in-state overnight travel to Loveland, Colorado for the Colorado Association of Gifted and Talented Conference. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.9, Superintendent's Recommendation. Approval for in-state overnight travel to Grand Junction, Colorado for the 2017 Western Slopes Atheism and Abilities Conference. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.10, Superintendent's Recommendation. Need a motion, un-motion. I need a motion for the approval to purchase additional amplified M-class Deebles Nextel web-based software platforms for grades K through 5. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.11, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need approval to purchase chemistry and biology resources at Adams City High School. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Yes. Is there any other items, like math, or any other items or class things we're going to need to buy in the future, or just those biology and chemistry?
That is what they've asked so far.
Anyone else? We have role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.12, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to use funds for food beverages for teachers' professional development. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, crab role call, Monica. Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to 3.13, Superintendent's Recommendation. I need a motion for the approval to contract with supplemental health care services for the professional service of a fully licensed occupational therapist. So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, can we have role call, Monica? Hi. Hi.
Hi.
Hi. Hi. Moving on to next item, communications. I need to get a confirmation from each board member if you plan to be in the homecoming parade on Saturday, September 23rd, and how you will be participating. This year is something new. They are giving parade entry forms, I guess, interforms that we have to fill out. So I guess what we need is confirmation, who plans to be in the parade?
I'll be there, and I'll be walking.
Okay, I'll be there, I'll be walking.
I'll be in my car.
You'll be in your car?
Yeah.
Is it a Corvette, or?
Mustang.
Mustang, all right.
I will be out of state.
You'll be out of state, okay. Connie?
I'll be there, and I'll be in the orange truck.
Are we going Broncos?
Yes.
All right, all right.
And Adams City High School.
Good for you. Make sure there's green on.
We will.
All right, good for you. Also, at that time, will we, do we want to hand out candy?
Yes.
To the community?
Yep.
Yes.
Yes? Okay, so Monica, can you order us some candy there, please?
Something other than Tootsie Rolls.
No, that's a city. And make sure that we have to fill out the interest form that they want us to fill out now. I also need, can I get a consensus from the board to give the leftover ice cream from the 56th Annual South Adams County Fire Department Spaghetti Dinner at the Homecoming BBQ sponsored by the ROTC? Okay, by me?
Yes.
Okay, Monica, we got a consensus there. Just like to remind that this year, the Adams 14 Board of Education will have two open seats this November. Election will be held on Tuesday, November 7, 2017, and we have four candidates running that you will see on the ballot. Mrs. Connie Quintana, Mr. Joe Dryly, Mr. Brian Joseph, who is that? Reichel, and Mr. Bill Hyde. So be paying attention to what they have to say. Also, I would like to say that I went to the opening football game of the season. I ran into Timmy, I ran into Joe. I don't know, Mr. Thomas, he was busy. Miss Quintana was busy. But it was good to see the young men. They played very good. They kind of resembled the Broncos. All defense, no offense. But they did a good job. Now, I don't know what happened last Friday. I was out of town. But hopefully, we'll be able to see them this Friday and, of course, homecoming. So the young men really did well, especially for the size that they are. They don't look like a high school team. They look more like a middle school team on their size. But they did well, and I'm really happy for our community. And we also had a very, very good crowd for opening day. I got there, and lucky thing I had my pass. I could walk straight through. But there was a line extended pretty far out there. They were pretty well. It was good to see them. And the high school, all the morale that was there. I saw a lot of teachers there